Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018. There are, the meeting is called to order if I start by asking all of you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are copies of the agenda available at the back of the chambers as well as at the recorder's desk if anyone needs one. We have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve this evening's agenda as presented.
Second. Actually, we have one addition I forgot about that we need to add, a resolution opposing Senate Bill 637. If we could add that as item number 11.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll amend my motion to include item 11, the resolution opposing the Senate bill you referenced.
Is that acceptable? I think Commissioner Oldman seconded it. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we have an agenda. Mayor Protown Iverson is excused this evening. We have minutes of the last regular commission meeting on October 2nd. We have a motion to approve. So move.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Commissioner Jenks?
Yeah, during commission remarks, it just says, "Major speakers at the meeting suggested not looking to the state or Washington for revenue increases." I would like to have added to that, it has to be done horizontally, foundations, local citizen groups, community groups and foundations. The major presentation was done in, at the meeting in Grand Rapids, and what the gentleman from Brookings said was is that we have to look horizontally rather than vertically.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a suggestion? And maybe that is we engage a consultant by the name of Coco, see where, and look at our meeting minutes and procedures because there's, it's supposed to be a record of what occurred, not what was said, and I just want to make sure that, you know, maybe we can take a good look at these and see if we're doing the right thing, maybe as a future discussion item.
Commissioner Oldman, that, is acceptable to that?
Certainly am.
Commissioner Rosell?
It's fine.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Communications. We have one, any comments? Seeing none, communications are received and filed. We have our county commissioner with us this evening, Commissioner Zach, any updates?
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. So I'm bringing some goodies from the county. I've been talking about this discount health program, the Live Healthy Oakland County, Michigan. It's not insurance, but it offers free prescription discounts, low fee dental discounts, as well as some other health discounts. And I've got some posters for the city, as well as some different brochures that I'm going to leave if residents are interested in this discount program. I also was given up, given these lockupOakland.com brochures to remind people that do have guns in their home to make sure that they lock them up appropriately. I want to tell you about an exciting program that's going on in the end of November. For the first time, Oakland County is going to be hosting this manufacturing type day for 10,000 students, and so it's with some surrounding counties, but there are 4,500 Oakland County students going out to the suburban collection in two-hour increments, and they are going to be able to meet with representatives, business representatives in technology, biosciences, manufacturing, so to introduce these students to other types of careers in the future. They've done this for four years successfully in Grand Rapids, the west side of the state, and it's really a wonderful way of developing future careers for students. So I'm very excited about it. The Board of Commissioners has authorized some funding for buses. We don't want schools to not come because they can't afford the bus. In our budget, I voted for the Oakland County budget in the end of September, and I want to tell you about a couple of things that we were able to add on. There was a half a million dollars allocated for a universal breakfast program done in conjunction with United Way. I visited a program at Hazel Park High School, and it's a wonderful, it's for lower income students, but what we're doing is there are some schools that have 40% low-income students, and what this will do is increase those, make it a universal program in those schools so that everybody's fed and people won't feel like, "Oh, I'm poor, you know, I have to be taking this food." What this money will help do is to pay for the startup costs of the kiosks, they're kind of like vendor carts where students get to grab healthy food choices, and then what will happen over time is we will draw, well, I'm being told about a million point two, 1.2 million dollars of food will come into Oakland County as a result of this investment. So I'm very excited about that. I do want to remind you again that our DNA lab that was started in the Sheriff's Department is operational, and it has been for several months. It took years to get going, and frankly, we've helped local communities. There is no longer this months of wait for DNA evidence, and it's really expediting some of the legal work that we're doing in our community, and I've gotten feedback from some of the communities. Other things in our budget that we were able to add, we are also going to fund, continue to fund the anti-bullying program, the Train the Trainer with Oakland Schools, and I know that we are participating around here with that program. And I do want to remind all of our communities, we had a pretty scary thing happen in Oakland County about a month ago, a few weeks ago, a cybersecurity issue where one of our cities, villages and townships was actually hacked, and the person who hacked was looking for money to get water bill data. So I just, I've been talking about this, you know, we read about things like that, but unfortunately, it happened in Oakland County, and I hope that we have proper insurance, and certainly the county is there to assist us, the technology department. But it was too close to home, so. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for public participation. This is an opportunity for any of the public to address the commission on an item that is not on the, on the agenda. If you have any. Seeing none, public participation is closed, and we'll move on to our first presentation, and it's an honor tonight to have Congressman Sandy Levin here with us, who would like to give us a few remarks about his upcoming retirement and other plans, maybe, so. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Sandy.
Thank you. Well, thank you. I'm glad to be here once again. I won't mention the first commission meeting that I was at. It was long, long ago. No, I don't want to talk about what I'm going to do next. Instead, I thought I'd follow Helene and talk a bit about what's going on, in this case, on the federal level. Actually, two of the points that you discussed, I was going to touch on, one of them briefly, the career and technical education. We passed some bills, others we did not. We did pass a massive Labor HSA bill, and it has money for career education, and so I was glad to hear what's being done on the county level. And Hannah's here with me today from our office. One of the school districts, Berkeley, which was our home's school district, does not have specific career and technical education programs. Royal Oak does, and I'm hopeful that there'll be an increase in these programs. There's such an obvious need, and there's discussion about the gap between jobs that are available and the technical skills to fill them. It's not always clear those figures are accurate, but there's clearly a gap, and we did provide some additional money in the Labor HSA, HSS, HSF, HSS bill. Let me just say a word, if I might, also about what Helene discussed relating to nutrition programs. It's one of the areas that we haven't yet resolved, and where there's major disagreement within the Congress. And there's been some effort to dramatically reduce these programs called SNAP, but I think there's a strong feeling that those programs need to be continued. What you mentioned about Hazel Park is more typical than people understand. In school districts throughout this county, virtually all, not all, but virtually all, these programs are utilized by a higher percentage of students than is commonly understood. Indeed, maybe we'll talk in the next few days about Hazel Park because there's also provision in the federal program, if it's maintained, that I think can be useful there. Also, in the HHS bill, there was money for opioid programs. The number of people in this county who died from opioid poisoning, 165 last year. It's a problem that strikes every community, and I'm hopeful that we can do better. Let me say a brief word about the funding that started 20 years ago now. Rob Portman, who's now a Senator Republican from Cincinnati, and I, based on my experiences, then I represented Troy, decided there needed to be funding for community anti-drug programs. It was his experience on a countywide basis and mine in a local community, what happened when there was a strong community effort regarding anti-drug, regarding drug abuse. And that proposal eventually happened with strict accountability from the communities. And it started at $10 million, and now is close to $100 million a year in seed money. And one of the effective coalitions has been the tri-community coalition. It received funding for 10 years. It did well enough to receive the second five-year funding. It no longer receives the federal funding because we decided to have essentially seed money and have communities try to pick up the slack after that. There is, to the credit of this county, $30,000 more or less that's provided to coalitions from county funds, and that's helped keep alive the tri-community coalition. They're also seeking additional funding from private and semi-public sources, and I wanted to mention that to you because some of you, if not all of you, have been involved in these programs. The tri-community coalition includes Huntington Woods, Berkeley and Oak Park, and I want to, this is the last time I'll be addressing you after many, many years, urge that you continue to be very supportive, because I think we're seeing now new needs. There's now new drug abuse, and I want to applaud this community for its interest. You've been splendid in so many respects, and it's been my, my privilege to represent this community from the very beginning. My first campaign manager came from here, and she was a beloved teacher, and there followed so many people who indicated their deep interest in public policy, and so let me just close by saying a word about that. I think this country is learning the hard way what happens when people don't take a community interest. A hard way, and I think there's now a resurgence of interest, and a considerable portion of it is among younger people. And I think all of us, regardless of our political affiliation, all of us need to encourage more people to be interested in and active about community affairs at all levels, including the local community. Because if you're not interested in the local community, it's likely that you're going to have diminished interest in what comes after that. And to this community, I've had the privilege of knowing your predecessors, knowing the previous city managers going way back, and I think this community needs to be proud of what you're doing today and what your predecessors did. We tried to find a house in Huntington Woods decades and decades ago. Even then, it was not easy to find a house. Even then, it was a very, very welcoming community, and it's only increased since then, and I hope that the citizens of this community, this splendid community, will realize that what has happened here with the libraries, with recreation facilities, with all kinds of community facilities, with the education system, that you have been such a key part, and I'll close with this, because my late wife, life was part of it. The Berkeley school system has, has maintained and deepened its strength, and it would not have happened without the participation of interested people in this community. It would not have happened. The original effort to set up a education support group would not have happened without the involvement of people like my late beloved wife, and lots of men and women, mostly women, here in Huntington Woods as well as Berkeley. So I want to close with that because everybody here has so much to be proud of. Thank you for letting me spend a few minutes.
Congressman, there's no way we can thank you enough for what a great friend you've been to our community for these many years, so please know you're always welcome to come back to the Fourth of July parade. It won't be the same without you, so please come, we'll always have a spot for you, and thanks again for everything you've done.
Thank you. I won't, I won't, I won't miss the parade. I promise you. Thanks a million.
Next presentation is a, is a presentation regarding amending the city ordinance to permit backyard chickens.
So we had a request from Georgia Stoy, asking the city commission to consider amending our ordinances to allow backyard chickens, and because this is a new subject for the city commission, she has a presentation that she'd like to show you, and Georgia, we're ready.
Hi, my name is Georgia Stoy. I'm 12 years old, and I'm in seventh grade at Norah. I love animals, and I have a thriving petting business. In fact, just this past Saturday, I pet sat for a couple of my favorite cats. I also volunteer regularly to help animals, and a couple of years ago, I went to an animal rehabilitation center in Costa Rica. But I also volunteer at New Beginnings and conducted a successful Cats Place drive last year for them. I'm a responsible pet owner myself. I'm here to convince you that chickens should be allowed in Huntington Woods as pets. Why do I believe chickens make great pets? They have unique personalities, they are funny, and all a little different. They come when they are called and can even learn tricks, including playing the piano and riding a bike. You can cuddle and hug them, and they are friendly and like to be held. You can play with them like dogs or cats. They are good for your garden, they will eat bugs and other pests and keep your garden free of weeds, and eggshells are a great fertilizer. As far as pets go, they are easy to maintain, and coops only need to be cleaned two to three times a year, and chickens eat pretty much everything except citrus. The amount of waste they produce is small, it takes six chickens to produce as much waste as one medium-sized dog. Are you still unconvinced? I know probably some of you are afraid of noise, smell and rodents, but here are some facts that help put your fears aside. Noise. Some neighbors might be worried that chickens are too loud. You don't need to worry about a cock-a-doodle-doo waking you in the morning. Only roosters crow, and my proposal is to only allow chickens in Huntington Woods. In fact, chickens only make noise for two reasons: if they are attacked or in danger, and when they are laying an egg. Chickens only lay eggs once a day, and the noise only lasts for just five seconds. I bet that's a lot less than your neighbor's dog. And during that five seconds, well, the noise level when they lay their eggs runs only about 60 to 70 decibels, which isn't a lot. Dogs bark at 90 decibels and above. Smell. Other neighbors might be worried that they'll be smelly and dirty. When it comes to smell, like any other pet, you need to be a responsible pet owner, just like you have to pick up your dog's waste from the backyard. As long as you keep your coop maintained, it won't smell, and the coop only needs to be cleaned out about two to three times a year. You just need to clear the nesting box of waste by throwing the waste on the coop floor, and it will compost itself naturally. Rodents. And others might be worried about attracting rats. When building your coop, use wire mesh, and rodents and other predators can't get in. Store food in metal containers, the same way you do bird seed, and rodents can't get to it. Again, like with your dog and bird feeders, keep waste and food spills cleaned up, and rats will have nothing to come for. Did you note that many surrounding communities allow backyard chickens already, and that Berkeley ran a pilot program for backyard chickens last year and made it permanent this year? Today, chickens are allowed in Auburn Hills, Berkeley, Clausen, Ferndale, Hazel Park, Lathrop Village, Madison Heights, Northville, Rochester Hills, Royal Oak, Southfield, Troy, Warren, and West Bloomfield, just to name a few. But why do chickens belong in Huntington Woods? What will make allowing them great for our community? Chickens produce eggs, which is good for yourself and sharing with neighbors. Two, chickens eat weeds and bugs, which gives you a healthier backyard. Three, chickens reduce trash and waste. You can feed them kitchen scraps left over from dinner, lunch or breakfast by reducing the amount of garbage our city sends to landfills. And three, or four, chickens provide entertainment and a reason to visit neighbors, getting people outdoors and supporting a more connected community. Still not convinced? Courtney Wooton, the woman who brought backyard chickens to Berkeley, is here today to support me and can also answer many questions you may have about Berkeley's program. She's also offering the commissioners a field trip to her backyard coop in Berkeley so you can see, hear and smell for yourself. To summarize, chickens are very friendly, they are fun to cuddle with and easy to maintain, and chickens are not smelly, not noisy, and are not rodent tractors. Please change the law so Huntington Woods, too, can benefit from backyard chickens. Thank you. Do you have any questions I can answer?
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions?
No, and thank you very much for that very well put together presentation. You did an excellent job.
I know we've, the city administration has started, started putting together some, some ordinances from the surrounding community, communities. I do have one question. Are you proposing chickens in kennels or free range, if that's the correct term for
I was just thinking in like the backyards and in coops, and, but not in kennels, like indoors or anything.
Do you want to, or do you want to bring up? We have a couple, we have a couple of guests here, including Courtney Wooton, who's got the coop in Berkeley, and also a council member from Hazel Park, who also brought her chicken. And also Lauren McCoskey, who is Ferndale backyard chickens. So they could probably answer some questions for you.
What might be nice is to explain the experiences that you've had and how long your program has been operating.
I'll go first. Hi, my name is Courtney Wooton. I am a resident of Berkeley, and I have backyard hens. When first coming to Berkeley Council, we were actually met with chuckles and laughs, and Mayor O'Dwyer saying, "No way." But what I've found from my personal journey with backyard hens, my hens started in Lathrop, then moved to Berkeley, we're in a situation where we are asking you to make law based on something that you may or may not have any knowledge of on a firsthand basis. So as Georgia said, I think it's important that each of you take the time to actually visit at least one coop firsthand. Each and every member of Berkeley Council visited at least one local coop, as well as members of the community that were against backyard chickens. What I found was that in each and every case, those that arrived dead-set against it, left with knowledge and understanding. They may not have been like ready to run out and get their own chickens, but they left understanding that it was an overall good thing for the community. I know one of your questions was about housing, and I can explain to you kind of what takes place is pretty similar in virtually every city that has chickens approved in the area, and... And the other ladies that are here can also share what their experience. Typically, chickens sleep in what's called a coop. They go to bed soon as it's dark. As Georgia said, they don't make a lot of noise unless they're laying an egg or unless they're in fear. So they're, they're pretty quiet animals, pretty docile animals. In most of the areas surrounding us, there are very specific requirements for what's called a run. It's where the chickens are when they're not in their coop sleeping at night. It's common practice to not allow free range tents. There are predators in the area. So much like a small dog, like a Pomeranian or something like that, you have to use the same protections for your pet, whether it be a small dog like a Pomeranian or Chihuahua. The same goes for chickens. So chickens are kept in a space that allows them plenty of space to be healthy and safe during the day. Chicken owners typically allow their chickens out only in their presence. So they do go out every day, kind of like you let your dog out for a walk, you let your chickens out in the backyard so that they can eat bugs and have some free time. But rather than reinventing the wheel, it's pretty easy to look at what other cities have done as far as requirements for the coop. They are made of quarter-inch hardware mesh as opposed to chicken wire. They are made with certain sizes. My particular coop has pavers underneath. And Laura can talk quite a bit about rodent control. You know, just as you have concerns about people that feed wild birds, you need to make sure that people that do have chickens are maintaining their coops properly. My particular coop has a floor of pavers and has an apron about three feet all the way around the entire coop. It has a four-foot by seven-foot footprint. So that allows an apron of hardware mesh so that no rodents can get in. And also, the coop is kept in a manner with this hardware mesh on all, all the sides or wood so that there's no, no possibility of gaining access for rodents. I was the one home that was in the pilot program in Berkeley. We now have increased our chicken permits. There are five available. I believe three are currently active. But during that time, we have had zero complaints, zero issues. And I do invite each and every one of you to come to my home, to visit my coop, and to gain some understanding in detail firsthand about what Georgia's talking about because it is probably a new concept to you. Thank you.
Okay. Courtney, could I have, make sure you leave your name and address and contact information with our clerk, just so we can get ahold of you.
I'll do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm on City Council in Hazel Park, so commissioners here, right? Commissioners? I always say it wrong, I'm sorry. Alyssa Sullivan, Hazel Park City Council Member. Mr. Jenks, I just saw you at the conference in Grand Rapids. Nice to see you again. I'm here as both a chicken owner, as well as a council member in a city that has a similar yard footprint to yours. We've had legalized chickens in Hazel Park since 1943. We have never had a single complaint, ever. I called and verified that again today because I was like, I just want to make sure before I come and announce that. We have not had a single complaint against coops or chickens in our city since 1943 when they were legalized. We have updated now. You do have to get approval from the city. I think currently we have 15 or 20 homeowners that have three chickens, three hens each. We do restrict roosters, as Georgia's proposing and as other municipalities do. Roosters are not, they're not necessarily friendly. They're also not really communicable for city living. But a couple of things I'd like to note is, I did bring my chicken. Her name is Ren. She is a house hen. She's a rescue. She lost her toes to frostbite. She's from southwest Detroit, so she's also bilingual. It's not a joke. I actually do dog training as well, and chickens are very easily trained in similar ways that you train dogs with clickers. And she knows commands in both English and Spanish. Her former owners only spoke Spanish, so we work with what we have, right? I can tell you that having a chicken in my home is not much different than having another bird, except she's very nice. I grew up with parrots, got bit many, many times by my mother's parrots. This chicken has never bitten me. She's lovely. She likes to snuggle. She'll sit on my lap and watch a movie. She likes my cats. She likes my dogs. They're actually afraid of her. My big dogs are afraid of my chicken. Pretty entertaining. They're like, "She flies, no thanks." But I would encourage you to really reach out to the other communities and the other community leaders that have had success with this program. I am thoroughly impressed by Georgia and her research and her ability to come up here and really request, but request with information and intelligence, which is wonderful. She's really done her research and I think she'd be a great chicken owner. And I'd love to see this be a success in your community, too. And I will leave my card.
While you leave your card, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
So in Hazel Park, you have a limit on the number of permits that you grant for folks who want to do this?
We don't have a number, a limit on the number of permits, but we do have a limit on the number of hens. And it's currently three. Most communities limit to three to six in this area because the, the square footage of your property available versus the space available for your chickens, for your coop, you want there to be enough room for your chickens.
What is the charge for the permit? And is it an annual renewal?
Ours is no charge. You just have to submit for approval. And then you submit your plan, we come out, we approve it, and then we just check in with you.
How do you cover the cost of the enforcement? In other words, I heard Ms. Stoy say how, you know, you have to, PowerPoint about, you know, how the, the, the coops have to be constructed and so forth. Well, say they're not constructed like that, how is that policed? And how, how do you have code enforcement if there's no reimbursement to the city for that overhead?
Well, because we haven't had any complaints since 1943, we haven't had the need to instill any cost to go along with that.
That's the difference between Hazel Park and Huntington Woods.
People don't like to tattle unless they're really mad at you in Hazel Park, but they will tattle on you for really silly things as well, so I feel you. Our code enforcement is busy here.
We're well acquainted neighbor versus neighbor.
Yes, 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 we are as well. I do believe that the other communities around us do have a cost associated. Plus, there's also the ability to, to get people through code enforcement, which then would reimburse for the cost. And that's kind of the way we've addressed it because there hasn't been, there hasn't been any backlash from the chickens, so we haven't had any cost really associated with it through the city, yet. But if there was, that would be a consideration.
You say you, it sounds like, how many, how many total in Hazel Park?
When I called today, I was under the impression there was 12, but I believe we have 15 currently.
15 houses in a community of...
Similar size to yours, 2.2 square miles, and you guys are 1.7. So yeah. About 17,000 residents.
So I guess if I, you know, I can, you always, when the, when the proponent of someone, of an idea comes in and want to talk about the upside, what, as a city council person now, not as a chicken lover and all this other thing, but what, how would you objectively describe the downside?
Well, because we haven't had any negative repercussions, I would say currently, I don't see any. I literally have, I reached out to code enforcement today as well as the, the city clerk and literally called the city manager and I said, "You, you promised me there has not been a single complaint." And he said, "None." And I said, "Since 1943, we have nothing on the records." And he's like, "Nope, nothing. Not a single complaint about any of the registered chickens."
Is the idea that the mesh would keep rats out?
Yeah, so there's a couple of great things. So I also have, I wear a multitude of hats. I also, for a very long time, did outreach in southwest Detroit. So a lot of the things that we did there were building kennels and dig-proof kennels for outdoor dogs, which is literally the exact same thing that you put in place to prevent rats from getting into chicken coops. So there are a couple of ways that you can address this. One of the easiest ways is to dig down and under or down and out, and you place the wire mesh, which is a thicker, it's not a chicken wire, but it's a thicker metal. It doesn't rust, it's chew-proof, all of those fun things. And you bury that, and then you place brick pavers against it to help keep it in place, but also to kind of create that seal.
It's the equivalent of a rat wall.
It literally is a rat wall. That's, that's literally what it is. Yep.
But see, my only, and I, and I understand that there's only 16, and I, and I understand that, but like I said, you, you, I'm looking, when you pass something, you don't just have to look at what you say is the positives and, and it's, you know, where's the downside to it? You know, there, and that, what, if you were being asked, I was going to put the young lady on the spot and give her a chance to do it with devil's advocate, but if you were going to say, "Okay, now I'm a resident that comes in and says, 'I don't want to even see these things here, or, or hear them, or smell them, or anything like that,' despite..." So how, how would you present the opponent's argument that, "No"?
Well, since I've met the opponents many times, and, and in multitudes of places, I also went and spoke in Claussen, because Claussen is trying to pass an ordinance as well. I would say that as, much like people that have dogs and have noisy neighbor dogs, a lot of things can be addressed through code. You can write into your ordinance all of the restrictions that you prefer. You can look at the successes that other cities have had, so you can, and, and their failures as well, so you can minimize those failures and do yours as a pilot program like they did in Berkeley. You know, they ran it for a year. How successful was it? How many, how much failure do we have? Can we tweak? Can we adjust? Do we need to? And I think that's a really, I think there's so many great examples locally of ways to prevent that kind of negative backlash and fallout.
Are there any kind of standards, uniform standards promulgated by any type of authority on what type of coop is desirable or...
To my knowledge, no. Laura, is that a...
Do you want me to step up?
So Laura is much more knowledgeable on the kind of statewide...
Something like American Chicken Coop Society or something like that.
What you're looking for is the generally accepted agricultural management practices put out by MSU. And if you look at Ferndale's ordinance, Ferndale includes all of that verbiage and cites that as part of the, the reason that they have standards for those coops. And to your point with negatives, I'm going to give you all the negatives because I myself...
I'm just playing devil's advocate here.
No, no, and, and, and I love that you are because there are, there are things that you might not expect. Because I, it took me four years to get chickens in Ferndale. I started out in 2008 before it was a hot topic within cities. And we got chickens in 2012. It was allowed. I petitioned for it, again, for four years, and heard every complaint and all the things that have been addressed thus far, smell, noise, rats, all of those, I've spoken to all of those. And just now in 2018, we've actually increased the number of chickens that we can have from three to six in Ferndale because it's been so successful and has been such a non-issue. However, the negatives. So hens don't crow unless they've hit henopause, which is just, it's a funny way of saying they're no longer kicking out those eggs as much. Their bodies are changing. They've gone through a lot in life. My hens are six years old and, or at least two of them are. Two are six, one is going through henopause. She has hit that spot where she's no longer laying eggs. And in the morning, she greets the sun with kind of a falsetto cockadoodle doo. And that is six years in, and it's very embarrassing, it's very quiet, and it lasts maybe a minute. But it's, it's something to be aware of. Additionally, my hens are spoiled because they've had six years in my yard. I let them out to roam around on the grass from time to time. I've actually set about half of my yard as a space for them to go out and do their thing and be chickens and be happy. If I don't go out early enough, they grumble. Literally, they will grumble out there and you'll hear that sort of noise, just grumbling in the backyard. It has not become an issue with my neighbors, and you know in Ferndale, our homes are in very close proximity. My neighbors don't hear it, or if they do, they don't mind. And I speak to all of my neighbors within that range. So those are two issues that are, they're, they're a potential, they're a reality. In addition, if you don't put a municipal code in place that states that you need to have a stationary coop or a coop that is fully enclosed with half-inch hardware cloth, that is the minimum size that you can use, half-inch hardware cloth, to enclose the entire thing, which includes the coop and the run, so that there's no points of entry, if you don't do that, you will get rats, period. Rats love chicken feed. Chicken feed is fragrant, especially if you use any sort of chicken scratch that has corn in it. So with those things in mind, if you do those two things and you pay attention to the generally accepted agricultural management practices, look for the GAMS online. If you look for that, then you can write your code accordingly so that you won't have an issue. But if you don't write a code and you have people that are out there with chickens, they're going to do it the wrong way. They can do it the cheap way.
Does Ferndale have a permit fee?
Yes, we do. It's $35 and it is an annual renewal. And we renew every year in January. Again, Ferndale, there have been zero complaints for people who legally have chickens. Now, there are about 21 or 22 people that legally have chickens in Ferndale. That number is increasing. So it's, it's something that we know is out there. We know that these people are on the books, they have their chickens, and they get inspected every single year in January. I don't love the fact that it's inspected in January because there's snow on the ground and I'd prefer that our code enforcement would be able to walk the perimeter of the coop to ensure that there is no point of entry to, to have these rats get in. I would prefer that. We're looking to change that in the near future.
What is the cost of one of these coops?
Mine was astronomical because I built it myself. And it's a beautiful coop. It's been featured on the covers of magazines, but it probably cost about $1,000. So, and that's an investment that I wanted to make because I wanted to do it right, not easy, right, so that it was sturdy, it was essentially bomb-proof. It's predator-proof, it's rat-proof, and it's very comfortable for the hens, and it's comfortable for me as a person who's going to go in there and clean that coop on a daily basis because I don't want bugs, I don't want rodents, and I don't want any sort of noxious fumes accumulating inside the coop because it can hurt the chickens, it can affect their respiration. So with all of that said, I went above and beyond because I'm paranoid, just a paranoid person. That's what I do. That's how I thrive. That said...
Living in Ferndale can do that.
It's true, and I came from Warren, so I've got a double whammy there. But I've worked with, I've worked with Ferndale, I've worked with East Point, I've worked with Warren on some of their, some of their code enforcement issues. So I have seen all of these people put into place smart municipal code that allows for this to their benefit. Because once you have that code on the books, you have a way to make sure that people abide by it, you inspect it, you give them that conduit so that they do it right. And if you do that, it's usually a non-issue. Again, I have seen, and I've spoken to code enforcement in pretty much all of these cities that were listed earlier, as well as some more. And nobody has an issue with permitted chickens who are abiding by their code.
You have, in the contemporary words of our society, illegals in terms of chickens?
Absolutely. Yep, there's absolutely illegal chickens within pretty much every city. I wouldn't be shocked if you had them here and you just don't know it. As she said, she has a chicken down below. They're very quiet, as long as they're not laying an egg, as long as they're not having a henopause moment, as long as there's no predator around. They're pretty quiet, they don't smell, you can't smell them up there. So most of the time, they're just ambling around in the backyard, picking at grass, eating bugs, eating their chicken feed. And then every once in a while, they go and lay an egg and they squawk about it. I would, too, if I was a chicken.
Could you give us your name again for the record?
Sure, my name is Laura McCloskey. And I am from Ferndale.
And if you, if you wouldn't mind giving our clerk your contact information, you seem to have a lot of information that might come in handy.
I do have a lot of information. If you're interested in learning more and seeing all of the various codes that are out there in southeastern Michigan, so I'm not touching on northern Michigan or western Michigan. I've compiled all of them to the best of my abilities on the Ferndale Chickens website. And there's a link on the front page that says Cities That Allow Chickens in Michigan.
Let me ask you a question about that because that's a, a good point that you make. A lot of times when we look at ordinances, we look at similar contiguous cities. Cities like Rose Point, Birmingham, things like that. Does, does Birmingham allow?
Birmingham does not.
Has there been a similar movement there?
Not to my knowledge. And I'm usually the first person to hear, so...
All right, and how about the Rose Points?
No, none there as well.
And I, and I only ask that because, like I said, you tend... And I, and I only ask that, because like I said, uh, you tend to look at contiguous communities, Beverly Hills, things like that. Uh densely, you know, some some variation lock homes, things like that, we, you know, older trees, all of that.
Sure.
Just trying to see, well, see what they do in a, you know, because it's not fair to go to like a Rochester Hills, which is new. And everything's underground, and you know, and everything, it's a totally different landscape, literally and figuratively. All right, well, thank you, you've been very informative, I appreciate it.
How long has the Ann Arbor ordinance uh been in place?
I wanna say that that was at least three years prior to Ferndale's ordinance, it could have been further, though. Um, because it was one of the ordinances that we looked at as we were crafting the Ferndale ordinance.
Mister Mayor, I had a question of the councilperson from Hazel Park. Are are you aware, I'm just curious, so are you aware of any instances where this perhaps has affected a resale of a home? Or somebody, you know, went and said, geez, uh, you know, they go in the backyard and they see the neighbor is, has chickens in their yard, and they say, geez, I thought I was buying a house in Huntington Woods. And not Romeo, you know, I'm not interested in, uh, because they're, they're unaware of, you know, the uh uh facts behind it. Um, right, so are you aware of that being a a disincentive uh to home sales in in your community?
Uh, it's kind of ironic that you ask that as well, because I was just at a a meeting the other day. We had a um a first responders dinner, and um some of our large real estate, um, one of the biggest real estate people in Hazel Park sponsored it. And I spoke with him and a couple of his associates, and we were, we got on, we got on the topic of chickens, because I said, hey, I'm I'm going to think about chickens. And I said, uh, I said, you know, have you heard heard of any issues, and he said, no, actually, a lot of the people coming in are citing the fact that they can have chickens. In Hazel Park. Um, the kind of new community that we're building in Hazel Park is a little bit different than the old Hazel Park. So, we're moving towards more of um people that are really about like greener living, and responsible eating, and responsible living. And um being a bit more uh back to nature, back to earth, um which is great, I'm super proud of that. We have a, we're, we're, I'm also on the Arts Council, uh, and we're really pushing our arts initiative in Hazel Park, which is great. And I think that's attracting a lot of the newer homeowners as well. Um, and back to address your issue about, or your question rather, about the cost. In Hazel Park, we're trying not to over-ordinance things that aren't a problem right now. Um, we have more of an issue with uh community cats and outdoor cats, so I'm actually, um, I've started my own nonprofit. And I'm working on an initiative to do an ordinance specifically to address cats, outdoor cats, um, community cats, and to work on uh TNR ordinance for that as well. Um, and then we just brought Laura in for uh rat issues.
You don't wanna have too many ordinances.
I know, because, but we're having a problem with that, so that's why we're working on things that we don't have, I mean, we have an ordinance on the books, we updated it in ninety-nine. We haven't really had any issue with it, so we're kind of, things that we're not seeing issues, we're kind of moving towards things that are being more brought up in the public as as.
I I have another, and and I'm doing this because this is our.
Gladly.
First opportunity to explore this.
Sure.
I wanna be sure that it gets a fair hearing. What about, uh, I heard all the business about health issues, but I wanna ask a more specific question. What about infectious disease?
Um, so, my chicken lives in my house.
I know, but I'm asking you, is there, do you know?
Communicable diseases?
Is there a concern about uh chickens carrying or, I I'm only asking, I don't, I don't know. All I know about chicken is I like it.
You might like her too, she's lovely.
I don't think I'd be the guy to own a chicken and name it Chicken Shack, but that's. What I'm asking is, are you aware of of infectious disease concerns about diseases? Or or bacteria, or call it whatever you want, uh that may be borne by chickens. That are perhaps not borne by other pets and things like that, just a question.
Yeah, absolutely, it's a, it's a valid question, um, so chickens are not vaccinated like other uh pets. Um, so they don't carry the same diseases as um mammals and things like that, dogs, cats.
Are they vaccinated at all?
Uh, they're not, are are yours vaccinated?
They can be.
They can be, I'm like, mine are not currently, um, but the uh, the the bigger concerns that you have to deal with are going to be um. Uh, the not cleaning of the coop, which would cause um, you know, normal parasites that happen outside. Um, from leftover feces, if say if somebody didn't clean up after their dog as well, um, similar things to those nature, um.
That's what called a rat restaurant.
Um, of sorts, except if your coop is good, you're gonna get more bugs than rodents, yeah. If your coop is intact, then you're not gonna get the rodent issue, you're gonna get bugs, flies, and things of that nature. Um, Laura, do you have more to talk about on diseases? Because I wanna give them the accurate information.
On the topic of diseases, most people are usually concerned about salmonella. That's what the CDC comes out with on a yearly basis, except for this year, and I don't wanna take credit for that, but I'm gonna take credit for that. Uh, so the CDC typically comes out around March, March and or up to June. With their numbers on reported salmonella cases, um connected to touching live chickens. And they label it as touching live chickens that are backyard chickens. Because the information that they can put out about it, number one, backyard chickens, we know is a hot topic. So they get people to engage with that information. Number two, most of the time that people are getting infected with salmonella is from baby chicks. And they love to put out the information that says, uh, don't kiss your chickens. If you do a Google search for don't kiss your chickens, you'll see the CDC saying over and over again, don't kiss them, don't cuddle them. However, the the real issue with salmonella and chickens is poo. If you touch poo and you put it on your mouth, you get salmonella, there's a risk there. So, common sense practices like washing your hands, not touching poo and touching your mouth. It it's, it's very simple, and it's very easy to do. With children, small children, they should not lick their pets, or lick anything that the pets have walked on. And I say these things because those are things that can happen. So, it's, it is not a public health concern in the way that you would think of an infectious disease causing an epidemic.
Salmonella, though, I mean, that is a.
It is a horrendous thing.
Dangerous.
Right. Now, you can get salmonella from touching something that a rat walked across, you can get salmonella from undercooked food. And yet, most of us aren't too concerned about it on a daily basis.
Has there ever been a study done about chickens involving home, home or backyard and salmonella?
I would refer you back to the CDC's website, so that is a, that's an ongoing thing that they report on. And they report every single case that they find. Uh, this year, they did not put it out in in the public the way that they have in years prior. Primarily because we have, I myself have reached out to the CDC and spoken to them and looked at their numbers, because they keep calling it an epidemic. An epidemic by their definition is two cases, two people that are infected, which is a little bit low. And the vast majority of the cases that they're reporting on are baby chicks from a single hatchery within the Midwest. Those birds are infected from birth, they don't just pick it up. So the likelihood of it being an issue for the vast majority of people, slim to none.
Had um in terms of like a university like Michigan State that has a very large uh veterinary medicine. Are there any uh, any guidelines or recommendations promulgated by universities? Or by veterinary medicine assoc-, you know, associations regarding this?
Absolutely, yep, the the real recommendations are wash your hands, don't walk in the house with shoes that you used in your chicken coop. And.
What do you do when you're in your yard, if you say you let the chickens out, and they, uh, you let them out in the yard and everything like that? Um, what do you do if there's waste in the grass and stuff like that?
Well, I personally, I personally do not, uh, I I'm not that worried about it myself. I don't wear my shoes in the house, I take them off at the back door, and I don't put my mouth on the grass, nor do I put my bare feet on the grass. Um, so for the vast majority of the time, I'm not at risk. Now, when I clean.
You engage in those precautions out of concern for?
I also have two dogs, and the dog waste probably scares me more. And I have raccoons that walk through my backyard, and the raccoons scare me most of all.
They're not yours, though, they're just.
They're not my raccoons, believe it or not, they're not my raccoons. Um, and in fact, I'm terrified of raccoons, absolutely terrified of them, because they, they can also have leptospirosis in their urine. And they have uh cryptosporidia within their feces, so I'm absolutely horrified by them, I do not like raccoons, they scare, scare the jeez out of me.
If you don't mind, if you would be kind enough to email uh either myself or uh our city manager. Um, some of the references you described, the C, the Center for Disease Control and so forth. That is far more of interest to me in terms of hardcore data and empirical information.
Sure.
I I get all of this, and I understand the the emotional component of it and everything like that. But when you're sitting here, you have to balance everything, it isn't just say, these are really nice people, a really smart young lady that came in, great, a great PowerPoint and stuff like that. Great, and then I wanna hear from somebody that says, you what? So, I wanna be able, whatever we do, and I appreciate the education, I I I really uh, I really uh learned a lot here tonight. And uh, um, I appreciate that, but I'd like you to share some of that.
Sure.
Hardcore information with us, so that we, if we do approach this, we approach it based on evidence, not just a good feeling and things, you know.
I don't know if you can tell from the way that I look, but I'm not the feel-good person in the crowd.
You're not the what?
I'm not the feel-good person in the crowd, I am the data person.
I like, that's what I'm looking for. I I always say that, I'd much rather see uh uh, you know, a peer-reviewed uh journal article or something. Of 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 a, that's, you know, like, based on scientific data, because that way you can make a more informed decision.
Sure.
So I appreciate that.
Mister Mayor, Mister Mayor, why don't we just refer this to city administration, have them pursue it further? Couple of things I'd like to see is looking at.
This is what you call being cut off.
Similar-sized uh communities.
I know how you feel, Jenks.
Yeah, you you're giving Jenks a run for his money today. Uh, Birmingham, Bloomfield, Beverly Hills, uh, growth, the Grosse Points, look at similar communities to us, what do they allow? Also, would you please check with some of our real estate professionals in the community, see if they have any concerns, or they've heard of anything. Uh, that's uh, you know, of issue that they may want to share with us. Thanks.
And just so you understand the process, I'm not sure what everyone thinks, it's in the uh, in the audience. But this, more than likely, once we receive a lot of this information back from administration, is something that the city council will. Uh, ask the planning commission to look at the official writing of the ordinance, and a public hearing will be held. So we get a lot of different input on it, if there is input from the public before we take action. And this isn't a public hearing, but I see a gentleman that looks like he really wants to say something, is, is that the case? Or am I misreading your, your body language, right there on the, yep? You look like you wanted to get up, that's why.
Very untrustedness, and I'm very impressed by this presentation that Georgia gave.
I didn't know if there was anything you wanted to add, if you, if you did, you're more than welcome to come up and.
Well, I'm a, I'm a nearby neighbor.
Could you come forward to the microphone, so everyone can hear and introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm, I'm a neighbor, just a couple of houses north and west of Georgia's home. And um, she gave her presentation to me in my home yesterday. Uh, or, there, a couple of days ago. Um, I was most impressed by it, I was even more impressed when I heard what she presented to you tonight. I welcome backyard chickens, and I'm gonna be close.
And your name, sir?
Talbert Stein.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Evan Gabries, my name is Evan Gabries, and I am a big part of four H. I'm a big part of four H, I am at the farm three times a week. And I do, my favorite animals are chickens, and I think it would be great to have them here in Huntington Woods. I, you, I play with chickens when I, whenever I'm at the farm, and I have never gotten sick from them. And no one in my club has gotten sick from them, I have a lot of experience with chickens, and I just think it would be great to have them in Huntington Woods.
Thank you very much. Okay. You're all set. Commissioner Jenks?
Yeah, I would hope that uh from the various cities, we could get the number of chicken complaints. But also, if you can check on the number of other animal complaints, dogs, cats. I suspect that the number of chicken complaints is substantially lower.
I uh lived with chickens for two and a half years while serving in the Peace Corps in Honduras, I'm Huntington Woods resident. And uh, if anyone on the commission wants to ask me about what it's like to live within three feet of a chicken, or many chickens. Or, as in my case, many thousands of chickens, I'm happy to talk to you guys about it, anytime, backyard bourbon, anytime, just uh.
Daniel, wanna give him your name?
Yeah, Daniel Brooks, I'm also on the EAC, the Environmental Commission. Uh, so, turning my card to clerk, all right?
Thank you.
I just wanted to respond a little bit further to a couple of the uh financial questions that you had. Um, I've had the benefit of having chickens in two area cities that handle the permits very differently. And I know that the the financial aspect of it is absolutely something important to consider. Um, Lathrop Village uh has a annual permit, it's sixty-five dollars. They also do an inspection. Berkeley has an eighty-dollar permit. One of the things that Laura mentioned is the inspection time period, which I think is something critical to think about, because winter is not the best time to do that. Berkeley does it uh twice a year, actually, uh permits are renewed in March, and there are inspections twice a year. And then I also wanted to just touch on the home sales. I am, am in the position, I'm probably the only person in the area that has actually sold a home and moved chickens to another local community with chickens. Um, I sold my Lathrop Village home uh last October. I had five offers on that house, three people wanted my chickens. I had to work hard to say, no, you can't have my chickens, and then they said, can I have your coop? I said, no, so, that is just one situation, but in my personal experience. Something that I thought would be valuable to add, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I'm gonna take one more comment from the back there.
So, yeah, like, maybe some people, like youth, could learn from chickens. Because I learned a lot of life lessons at home, and it could teach us more about farming and things like that. So, we could learn more about chickens and farming.
Thank you, could you tell us uh your name for the record, too?
Willam Allen.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Moving on, we have yet one more presentation this evening, from Eli, from Eli Wine Company. This is a presentation regarding a proposed business plan uh on Eleven Mile Road at the old Sam's Market.
What wine goes good with chicken?
You have to wait for him to be. That's another thing to contemplate. Boy, after listening to Georgia and her eloquent and convincing argument, I'm afraid I'm not even as close. To her presentation or the way that I'm gonna talk about my subject, so uh, Mister Mayor.
I had suggested that Eli uh make presentation to the city commission. If he is able to execute a contract with the owner of um, called former Sam's Market, he will be applying for.
You have to open the door, please.
He will be applying for a liquor license, and ultimately, that is something that the city commission is going to be asked to either approve or disapprove. So I thought it would be a good idea for him, before he started the process, to introduce himself, talk about his business plan. So that when the, if if he's able to execute a contract, if that. if that, uh, comes before the city commission, you're familiar with what it is and he will be, um, what his business plan is.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, counselor and city manager. Thank you for giving me the time to, to talk about, uh, my proposal. Uh, my name is Eli Boot and I'm the proprietor of Eli Wine Company. Uh, Eli Wine Company was started back in nineteen ninety-one in Royal, Royal Oak, Michigan. And now it's in, uh, in Birmingham, Michigan. And, uh, it's the, uh, uh, kind of business that is different from other wine shops, uh, not only locally, but, uh, in different states as well. Uh, most wine shops or convenience stores or grocery stores, they're relevant to people's daily habits. They're relevant to their table, their daily table. My business, uh, I am relevant to people's lifestyle. What that means is that we create a context to the wine that we sell that draws from different, uh, uh, confluences, uh, whether it's geographical, historical, cultural. And we engage people on that level. So we don't get the same frequency of, uh, of buying as other stores do, but we typically have customers that will stay, stay with us, uh, for life. I'm very happy with my, uh, location in Ro-, in Birmingham. I keep saying Royal Oak. And I've been there for four years and, uh, were able to, uh, create that context that I'm seeking to engage my customers. But there is no substitute for sampling the wine itself. And, uh, as the saying would go, uh, one picture is worth a thousand words and I think one sip is worth a thousand words. Uh, what I'm hoping to do with my proposal now, I'll tell you about it a little bit more, is to be able to have the, uh, packaged beer and wine license, which is just wine for me, and, uh, be able to get a Class C license to be able to, to serve the wine for our customers to, to taste. So the, the location that-